All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council's special meeting of Monday, January 9th, 2023, to order. If I can have our city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Here.
And Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Busque.
Here.
Mayor Weahavakom.
All rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just thought that. Yeah, so we didn't humiliate you enough. You had to double it. Triple it.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Are there any comments from the public for agenda items? Only anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, moving on to our special business. Today, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. If I can have our city clerk, please read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres of Florida proclaiming January 20th, 2023 as Arbor Day. Native trees stabilize erosion, improve the soil in a way non-natives do not, improve air quality, reduce ozone, decrease pollution, prevent runoff, improve human health and living conditions, conserve water, improve local climates, and produce oxygen and observe carbon dioxide. Therefore, the City of Green Acres, as of today, do hereby proclaim January 20th, 2023 as Arbor Day to promote wise restoration and stewardship of local habitats, including the promotion of planting native trees as well as the maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban settings. Thank you.
And if I can have Barbara Hartzell from the O'Leander Gardens Club come up? Absolutely. Come on up, everyone. We'll come over here for the pictures, absolutely.
Not yet. I'm waiting to find the camera. I found the camera.
Good. Find the hole now.
Becky Walton, co-president of Oleander Garden Club, along with Janet Stein, also co-president of Oleander Garden Club. The Garden Club values its partnership with the City of Green Acres, and we applaud all you do with regards to the environment and improving the city. Thanks.
We enjoy working with kids and children and hopefully educating them toward continuing the education or environmental aspects of your great city.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Hartzell. I'm a former president of the Oleander Garden Club of the Palm Beaches. And I wanted to tell you that this Arbor Day, January 20th, is very special. We would invite and we will give you an invitation to all of you. We are going to be over in Conference Room 4, next to the Ballroom. We have invited the Greater West Palm Beach Women's Club to join us, as well as the Boynton Beach Garden Club to join us. We are having a very special speaker, Andrew Seibel. And Andrew is the person that works for State DOT for all the interchanges along all of the turnpike in this whole area that plants them all with all the beautiful native flowers. And the next interchange that he's doing is Green Acres, Lake Worth.
All right.
So please come, January 20th, 3 o'clock.
Thank you. All right, so I am going to add a little something here. So when we take over this position, and I mean we as elected officials, we're really not told what the job entails. And there's really no schooling to go for doing what we do and serving our community. And I think we do the best that we can moving forward. But once you get elected, there are some trainings that you go to through the Florida League of Cities and other organizations around the country. But it's always a major milestone when you decide that you want to take that next step and go and learn really what, how to manage government and how to get information, because sometimes that's the hardest part, is collecting information and knowing how to distribute information. But I really, the point of this is I want to recognize our newest council member, Susie Diaz, for completing her EMO, which is the Institute for Elected Officials I. She completed that back in October, and we have your certificate here that we want to recognize you with. So please give her a big round of applause for doing that.
Did we hit the picture?
And as you can see up front here, we have a birthday today. And if we did it to our city manager, we're going to do it to our council member,
Paul Busque. So please join me in wishing her a very happy birthday, and let's all sing happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you, Paul. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, everybody. I need to do another year. I think you overdid it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right. I'm glad we did that. That was nice. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Diaz. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, moving on to our first item of the regular agenda, public hearing for ordinance 2022-39, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-39, second reading, amending the future land use map of the future land use element of the city's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation of one parcel of land totaling approximately 20.1183 acres located at the southeast corner of Lake Worth Road and Jog Road at 6400 through 6490 Lake Worth Road and 4180 South Jog Road, Suites 1 through 9, from a Palm Beach County designation, Commercial High, to a City of Green Acres designation of Commercial. As requested by the Planning, GIS, and Engineering Division, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for transmittal to the Division of Community Development, providing for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And we have our zoning administrator, Karen Garner Young, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. As noted, this is our second reading of the land use amendment for the property which we know as Lake Worth Plaza West. This is a land use amendment from Palm Beach County Commercial High to the city Commercial. It is required due to the recent annexation that we accomplished. I'm willing to do a presentation, but we had DRC, PZAB both recommended approval. This came to the council previously on first reading. No changes were requested. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-39, CPA 2202, and we ask that everything in the file be included as part of the record. I'm eager to answer any questions or do a presentation if requested.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council?
Yes.
Councilmember Busque.
They said this couldn't be done, so congratulations, everybody. It's like a 30-year quest. Hartzell.
Excellent. So did I hear a motion there?
Public hearing.
Public.
Public hearing.
Oh, this is a public hearing. Yep. All right, so I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-39, second reading. If anybody wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anybody wishing or speaking in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-39.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, moving on to our next item, public hearing for ordinance 2022-40, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-40, second reading, approving a zoning change for one parcel of land totaling approximately 20.1183 acres located at the southeast corner of Lake Worth Road and Jog Road at 6400 through 6490 Lake Worth Road and 4180 Jog Road, Suites 1 through 9, from a Palm Beach County zoning designation of general commercial to a City of Green Acres zoning designation of commercial intensive as requested by the Planning, GIS, and Engineering Division, providing for changes to the official zoning map, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have zoning administrator Karen Garner Young presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is second reading. It's a companion petition to the previous one that you just approved. This is a rezoning from Palm Beach County Commercial General to the city Commercial Intensive. You would think that it would be a Commercial General, but it doesn't. The Palm Beach County doesn't, isn't, exactly matches ours. The Commercial General really matches the Commercial Intensive. This is required due to the recent annexation. Again, I'm willing to make a presentation. The DRC, the Planning Board of Adjustments, recommended approval. This is second reading. At first reading, presented to the council, no changes were requested. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-40, ZZ 2202. We ask that everything in our file be included as part of the record. Again, I'm available to answer any questions or to make a presentation if requested.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? All right, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-40, second reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Public hearing is now closed.
I'd like to move approval of ordinance 2022-40 on second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, next item, public hearing for ordinance 2022-41, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-41, second reading, approving the conveyance of 6,804 square feet strip of land located adjacent to and east of the property at 1105 South Jog Road, Green Acres, Florida. Authorizing city manager to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the conveyance, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you. And we have, huh, zoning administrator Karen Garner Young presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is second reading of a request for purchasing of city property. Do have the map on top. If you see the red box, it's to the right. I want to make sure, yeah, to your right is the parcel, strip of parcel we're talking about. It's about 6,800 square feet. I previously provided you a presentation regarding the petitioner's request for the parcel because they plan on providing a project adjacent to it and felt the additional property would make it a much better project. It has not been filed with the city, so I have nothing to tell you what it's in regards to. But this would authorize the city manager to accomplish the conveyance. Our code requires two readings and an ordinance. It was presented to the city council previously on first reading. No changes were requested. Staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2022-41. I am prepared to answer any questions or to provide the presentation again if requested.
I have a question.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Noble.
Yeah, I missed the first meeting, so I don't quite know where that piece of property is. Can you give me?
So if you look to the top, it's Dillman, Dillman Road, and it's on the west side of Jog Road. Near Parkside Drive. See Parkside Drive on the right side?
Parkside Drive. Where's Aldi's and all of this?
Uh, south.
This is north of Forest Hill.
North of Forest Hill.
Right.
Right before Summit.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. All right, north of Forest Hill. Now I know where it's at. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And it's the parcel, not the red parcel, it's the parcel to the right that we're looking at, the 6,800 square.
It's this little strip right here.
Right here where I'll put my, right there.
Are there any other comments or questions from the council? All right, this is public hearing, so I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-41, second reading. Anyone wishing to speak, please, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-41, second reading.
Second.
All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, our last item on the regular agenda is public hearing for ordinance 2022-43, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-43, second reading, amending the City of Green Acres budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, inclusive, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And we have our city manager, Andrew McHugh, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This amendment is a budget adjustment to the fiscal year 2023 budget to cover cost increases associated with the city sidewalk and the septic-to-sewer projects, and additionally, funds were not budgeted for the cost of issuing permits to ourselves, so we have to move the money from one account to another account, so we do have to reflect that in the budget as well. This ordinance 2022-43 was approved on first reading. Staff is recommending, there have been no changes since first reading, and staff is recommending ordinance 2022-43 for approval on second reading.
Any comments or, any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance 2022-43, second reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-43, second reading.
All right, I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, second by Councilmember Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries 5-0. All right, we're moving on to discussion items. Our next item is removal of acrylic dais partitions. And Councilmember Dugo requested this to be added, so I'll hand it over to her.
Well, I was just suggesting that maybe at this time, we might consider removing them. Or maybe those that want them removed and some that don't. I just, you know, having attended several other meetings, and I think, you know, it's just asking those of you that might be interested in doing this.
All right, are there any other comments or questions from the council?
Yeah.
Deputy, I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Tharp and then Councilmember Busque.
I think, you know, we had, with, look, I mean, there's a resurgence of COVID, RSV, all these other things. I don't think that much of an encumference. And I think if one person objects, then we should all, you know, support that decision. And everyone's comfort level is different. So if anybody wants to say, hey, I want to keep them up, I think we should all agree to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Busque.
Yeah, I'm opposed to it. There's a resurgence of COVID and all different variants of COVID, and I just don't see the problem with it. I mean, masks should be optional. I choose to wear it. You don't have to put these partitions. It's, for whatever good they might do, I think it's, doesn't make sense to take them down. That's it. I'm done.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'll speak.
Councilmember Noble.
Yeah, I guess we ought to, since we're concerned about whether it's coming back at this time, there's a lot of comments in the press about it. We certainly can think every two or three months, we could bring the issue up and review it if we decide to keep these, okay? Which I would be, for the moment, I would be in favor of keeping them.
Keeping them?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I think there's sort of consensus to keep them, so.
Yes.
I'm going to, I'm just, for point of clarity, I'm just going to ask everybody. There's no other comments. Am I correct about that? All right, so I'll start to my right, Council, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
I'll keep them.
Councilmember Noble.
Keep them now and talk about it again in the future.
For myself, I don't have a problem either way. Councilmember Dugo.
Well, since we don't want to do it now, I'd like it brought up maybe in a month or when people might be more comfortable.
Sounds good. Councilmember Diaz.
I don't have a problem either way, so I'm good with revisiting it every few months.
Okay, and Councilmember Busque.
I'm opposed to taking them down.
All right, I think we have consensus to just bring this up maybe at a later meeting to discuss again. Anything else, Councilmember Dugo?
No, thank you.
So moving on to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to come up and speak, please come up. This is your cue, I guess, right up here on the podium.
You're on.
You'll have three minutes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Stefan Young. I live here in Green Acres. And I'm a recent mover from about four months ago. And I'm a very avid pickleball player, so getting right to the point, I noticed that Freedom Park is in a little bit of repair. And so I've gave, I've given some ideas to the city manager, as well as Michelle and her team, about some repairs and changes that could be good for the committee, good for the community. And just briefly, you know, some repairs like raising the fence. And I know that's a little more costly too because the fence is too low. And we really need things like wind screens to protect us when we're playing in a windy environment. However, more importantly, there is no seating area anywhere. It wasn't built with any of that in mind. So if somebody wants to come and sit, they have to bring a chair and sit somewhere outside the property. So I suggested we put like a nice awning over that green area just south of the property of the pickleball courts. Add a couple of gates so people can come in from different entrances to the pickleball courts. And resurfacing a couple of the areas that have really faded out. I don't know why they have, but they need repair. They need to be repainted. I would change the color from yellow to something other than yellow because a lot of the balls that we use are yellow, and people get confused with that. You know, the new rule is you can't wear a shirt that's the same color as the ball now, so. So the things like that that come into play for all of us. We want to, I'd like to really make this a really nice facility. You have a beautiful park. A lot of people will go there. And I think we could even offer instruction for people who want to learn how to play, and I'd be more than willing to volunteer to help with that. And since I have a lot of friends who live nearby, that would be an alternative for us as well, for another beautiful place to play. And I hope those, we can bring about some of those changes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our city manager, I know that you spoke to her earlier, so I'm pretty sure she'll address it.
Yep.
All right, so anyone else wishing to speak? All right, moving on to the city manager's report. City Manager McHugh.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a couple of updates on some things that are coming up here in the next couple of weeks. We do have a community conversation this week regarding college readiness. Just as a reminder, it will be this week, on the 11th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the community center. And also remember, any students that attend these community conversations, they do get community service hours. So if you have students, know students that are looking for community service hours, please let them know. There's always really good topics, and oftentimes, they do gear those discussions towards young individuals. So, but again, this week, it is college readiness on the 11th. Also coming up, our artsy event is the 21st here at City Hall, so we have that. And then for upcoming meetings, our meeting that is our normally scheduled meeting for the 16th of this month will be canceled due to the Martin Luther King holiday. We do have a special meeting on the 1st of February, and that will be to discuss the comp plan now that we've heard feedback from the residents and the two input meetings that we received and just other input. It's now time, we're starting to receive information and putting it together, so we want to be able to discuss that with the mayor and council so we can get some of your feedback as well.
When do we expect to get something so that we can start reviewing?
I actually think that you will have something here within the next week and a half. I will, I will talk to staff about that, okay?
Thank you.
And then the last thing, just as an FYI, the tentative start date for the wall at Melaleuca and Haverhill is going to be the 23rd of this month. So we're working with the schools, understanding that there's a lot of foot traffic in that area, but the artist is looking to start that wall on the 23rd. Outside of that, I don't have anything else. Thank you very much.
Quick question on the wall. Did we remove the snake?
Yeah, the snake, they're going to do something else.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any comments or questions for our city manager? No, thank you. All right, moving on to our city attorney's report.
No report, other than wishing everyone a happy and healthy New Year.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the mayor's and city council's report. Don't really recall where I started last time. I'm going to start with the birthday girl, Councilmember Busque.
What a present. Thank you, Mayor. I really have nothing to say except happy New Year to everybody, and thank you for the lovely birthday wishes and song.
Councilmember Diaz.
Are you sure you want to thank us for the song?
Yeah, well, it's polite, right?
A couple of things. First, and I probably should have asked City Manager McHugh, can we just make sure that at that community talk this week, we have information about the scholarship program?
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like it's probably the right demographic for that, so thank you.
Yep.
Along those lines, I did want to bring something up to the council. It is a school district situation, but I do think it's important that our council understands what is happening. Currently, our six-square-mile city is zoned into four different high schools. We are about to be zoned into five different high schools. Now, if this is what's in the best interest of our children, then by all means, we would, I would support what is in the best interest of our children. But there are committee meetings that are happening and voices that are a lot more prevalent than any of ours or anyone from our community, and it's resulting in some boundary maps that are incredibly gerrymandered, some which are very much to the detriment of some children that might even be able to walk to a school. Just to give an example, the current map that is being considered at, it is called the ABC Committee. They are the ones that identify boundaries. The current map that is being considered this Thursday, it's the seventh version of the map, they are considering putting River Bridge, which is SAC 180B, at the new school. So that would mean that our students would go from Forest Hill and Jog out to Lake Worth and Lyons instead of up the road to Palm Beach Central. I very much suggest that my council look at the maps and look at what it's doing to our city. There are, you know, there are many different ways that this can be looked at. There is a strong presence from some of the communities just west of the new high school to not have their students zoned into this high school. One SAC, which is literally a stoplight away from the new high school, is being asked to be zoned into Palm Beach Central. And so by consequence, what's happening is, again, we are, we have five different high schools in a six-mile community. So I will forward to the city manager a link that she can share perhaps. And I just urge you, while I know this is not something we vote on here, it is something that is important to our children. important to our children and to our families. Thank you.
May I respond? It's been like that.
Councilmember Busque.
For so long. I mean, I have a friend whose kid is out of college for five years, lived in River Bridge and was sent to John I Leonard. I mean, they, they really need to stop this. I will definitely look into it.
When is?
Hold on, let me go in order. Councilmember Noble.
Well, I appreciate, um, the comments that were made, because I don't have any children in school, so I'm not aware of the, of what is happening. I think we should look a little further into this issue. I'd like to see those maps. You know, I've had this one big complaint, you hear me about it all the time, is that we pay for all the school crossing guards, when most of the kids are coming in from other areas, and, and now we're opening up another area, and, and probably they'll need more school guards, crossing guards. And so I don't know whether Green Acres is being abused because we're nice guys. So why don't we look a little further? I suggest that we look into a little further on this and, and discuss the issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugo.
Councilwoman Diaz has stated, and I, I forgot, there's a meeting on this, right?
Correct. This Thursday?
This Thursday.
At 5:00 via Zoom.
At 5:00 via Zoom, which, you know, I would encourage everyone.
Thank you. So councilmember Diaz gave me a little background, she sent me an article on this. And from what I understand is Wellington, in particular, has been very vocal about not wanting to send their kids outs, outside of Wellington schools, which then the school district is left to find students to fill a new school. And obviously, they, the, the, the city to the, to the east of Wellington is us, so then we're getting picked apart, and it, you know, the way I see it is, we, we, the more divided our schools are and the further apart our students are, the harder it is to maintain a, a sense of community and to keep things, the information flowing. And, and I mentioned this earlier, how hard it is to communicate sometimes. But when we have our kids going to five different schools, when we have a high school, one of the original high schools in this county, and our kids are going all over the map. So my, you know, to echo the message that councilmember Diaz brought up is, be present at this meeting, let your residents know. If they have kids, you know, heading into high school, if they're in middle school right now, they may be getting in a bus and getting shuttled over to Lyons and?
Lake Worth.
And Lake Worth. It's a beautiful facility. I have no complaints, and the, the principal that's going to be heading that school is, it's outstanding, but it makes no sense to, to change the funnels that are, that are in place right now. So Okehealy feeds into Palm Beach Central, and, you know, Lake, Elsie Swamian feeds into, I think they feed into two, Santa Lucius and, and John I. So, but it's, it's hard. So Thursday at 5:00, there is a Zoom meeting. Log in, you have to register to speak, and it would be great to have elected officials on that meeting, sharing their opinion about this. So talk to your community, talk to your, your residents. I think this is important.
Mayor?
I have one more comment.
Councilmember Busque, let me go back to councilmember Diaz. You want to add anything?
I just want to add that for anyone, there were two meetings already. This is likely the final meeting. Unfortunately, we are late to the game, but the prior two meetings are public and are, you can listen to hear what's already transpired, and it will give you a very clear picture of what's happening.
Councilwoman Busque.
Can we, as a council, if we are all in consensus, do a resolution to send over to them? Would that be any help?
I don't know if we can get a resolution passed by then.
After we discussed it.
Yeah. I don't know.
Well, well, if there is, if there's consensus to move forward with a resolution, staff can prepare something in coordination with the city attorney, and we can put something together and, 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 you know, the approval has been given here to do something like that, if that's the consensus, yeah, to do that, we can do that. I think I would just defer to the city attorney to ensure that I'm, I'm correct with that.
Does it serve you? Prepare a resolution that talks in terms of we support keeping our community together, our children together as much as possible, and if you want to be more specific, we could be, in terms of, you know, Santa Lucius and John I.
Okay, I'll get back to that in a second. Councilmember Noble.
Yes, again, my longstanding beef that I have is that, again, if you look at your tax notice that you received, you'll find that you're paying more for school taxes than you're paying for a city, for the City of Green Acres property tax. And the City of Green Acres gives you everything you have here, everything you can think about, and it's, you know, a few hundred bucks. And, and the school tax is higher than that, and most of us do not have children in school.
I'm going to defer to councilmember Diaz. Do you want to draft or compose a motion for this resolution?
I think it's a little more complicated than that. I, I don't know, I mean, at this point, the way we are completely gerrymandered, I don't know that there's a way to avoid having any students from Green Acres going to the new school, based on the proximity. I think the bigger issue here is, and, and to councilmember Busque's point, yes, this has been going for a long time. So what can we do moving forward to sort of mitigate this continuing to happen? And what I, what I was seeing in studying the maps is that, you know, even if it's just these, you know, the certain, certain sacs that, that can help carve more square lines and, and, you know, it, I don't know that it's a keep all our kids in, that's, I don't know that that's capable of happening at this point. So I don't know exactly what that resolution would say, or honestly, if there would, if it would be effective. I think more effective would be if we?
Participated?
If we participated in this meeting and voiced, it, it's, it's, it makes no sense to me to take a child that lives in River Bridge, which is literally up the road, and ship them over to Lyons and Lake Worth, going through two of the busiest intersections of Palm Beach County, in buses, when we know that the school district already has a huge issue with buses, and then taking children that are just west of Lyons and Lake Worth Road and busing them over to Central. So I think the bigger issue is, will they reconsider some of these sacs to not break up our community as much as they are?
Mayor, if I can.
City manager McHugh.
Thank you. I, I think, and I think that speaking to councilmember Diaz's concerns, I think one of the larger issues too is that there are some communities that are wanting to remain intact and keep their students within certain areas, and the, and it's to the detriment of other communities, where that's where you're, you're seeing that we're now going to be shifted with these new maps to other, other schools. And I think if you take a look at the maps, you will see that there are some communities that are intact, and they're getting what they want. And I think that just for whatever reason that is, I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't want to speculate, but I think that it is to the city's detriment as a result.
So can we draft that into a, a resolution? Can we, can we empower our city manager to draft this resolution so that it conveys that specific message? Is that something that this council would be interested in?
Yes.
Starting from councilwoman Busque.
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz. Councilmember Dugo. Councilmember Noble.
As long as we have a, a major majority agreeing on that resolution, okay?
And?
A simple majority.
I'm a yes.
All right, so I think that's a supermajority.
Supermajority.
All right, so then, uh, we have a, do we need to make a motion for this resolution? Is that? Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so do I, do I hear a res, a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to draft a resolution. I can't remember the exact words you said. To the school board, supporting us becoming more cohesive as a community with our schools. I'm not sure what the exact words were.
Second.
All right, I, we'll defer to our city manager.
I think that it should have a supermajority.
Well, it does.
It already does.
Approval.
First of all, there's, there is no rule stating that you need a supermajority for a resolution vote. You're, you're adding that, you can't just add that on, on a specific vote, but, um, all right, so I have a motion made by councilmember Diaz, second by councilmember Dugo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, okay, so that motion carries five, zero. All right, councilmember Dugo's report.
I have just a question. Are you going to be able to courier that to them by the 11th? The resolution?
Oh, yes.
You'll get it couriered at least to them by the 11th?
Yeah, I assume we would probably email it to the?
Yeah, we can send it, we can email it to the school board.
Circulate it to the board.
Okay. My only comment is, today is National Law Enforcement Day, and again, we bow to all of our law enforcement, and thank you for all you do.
Absolutely. Thank you from the city.
Councilmember Noble.
My time to make some comments. The Fiesta de Pueblo activity was a smashing success. There were thousands of people there, and it was very well done, and apparently, it caught the eye of a lot of county officials who were there. And made me realize that Green Acres, putting on an event of this type, has made an impression that we have this event here in Green Acres that is recognized throughout the county. So I'm thinking in the future, as this thing gets larger, if it does, in many years in the future, we may want to consider Freedom Park to have that event. And we have plenty of space there, it's out in the country, it doesn't bother too many neighbors. What you need is a lot of parking, that would be one of the things. So that would be my first comment, is think in terms of the future of Freedom Park. My second comment is just, you know, typical Peter Noble comment. Proclamations, which we have, why don't we have one day a month, and we read off all the proclamations? And that way, our meetings are a little bit less involved. So that's a thought that we should consider, that maybe we'll have a, one meeting a month, and it'll be just to read off all the proclamations.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Also, just as councilmember Dugo mentioned, National Law Enforcement Day, thank you to all who serve. We, we can't do it without you, so appreciate everything you do for us, and that's all that I have this evening.
Thank you. For the mayor's report, I'm extremely happy that councilmember Diaz brought that up. Thank you, councilmember Dugo, for recognizing law enforcement. And the last thing I wanted to let everybody know is that our current county commissioner, Commissioner Kerner, actually has been appointed to a statewide office, and we have a new incoming commissioner, which the governor has appointed, Michael, Michael Barnett, and he's actually going to be sworn in tomorrow. So as of tomorrow, we have a new county commissioner. So just wanted to bring that up. That concludes my report. Meetings adjourned.